All right, I'd like to call to order the October 25, 2011 meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that Council members Rozansky and Daigle are currently absent.
All right, thank you. We do not have a study session today, and therefore we will be adjourning to closed session, or recessing to closed session. This is the time for public comments on the closed session agenda, which is set forth in the printed agenda for the meeting, and any other comments that anyone would wish to make. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we're adjourned to closed session.
Expansion of the library, which is a great part of our civic center project, is 17,000 square feet. So that's quite an amenity that's going to be added to that particular project. Additionally, we also have a helipad item in Costa Mesa. For those of you that might recall, there was a proposed helipad right adjacent to the airport property that Newport Beach Council has opposed. So our counterparts in Costa Mesa have continued that. It looks until March 2012. And I want to underscore that we are working cooperatively and collaboratively with the city of Costa Mesa on a number of issues involving our shared services. And then finally, our aviation committee meets on Monday, October 31. And as some of you may have read, issues there will continue to be important as we attempt to enter into renegotiation of our settlement agreement. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Curry?
No items.
And Councilmember Selich?
I have no items.
Councilmember Hill?
I do have one thing just to mention. I received my November/December issue of Westway Magazine, and I was very pleased to see that the Balboa Peninsula is featured on the cover, and has a full, open-page spread on the inside. Notes everything from the Sunridge View Park to the Wedge, and Sunset View Park, and a lot of businesses in between. And there's a little footnote down at the bottom by the visitors and conference bureau, so I think that, I think we can be pleased with the coverage that we're getting. So just urge everybody to read their Westways Magazine. Otherwise, no report.
Okay. Councilmember Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
Yes, we got, several of us got an email, ooh, maybe two weeks ago, about fishing from the bridges. And I'm hoping we're pursuing that and looking into it.
You're speaking about fishing inside the harbor beneath, say, the Newport Boulevard Bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah, we are looking into that.
Okay, because somebody got snagged.
Somebody got, yeah, a hook in their hand, right.
Yeah, so, okay, good.
Okay. Okay, several things to mention. I had the very great pleasure of providing welcoming remarks to the NAACP State Convention for the States of California and Hawaii this past October 20, last week. And I think that underscores the breadth and depth of the kinds of things that go on in this city in terms of convention work and meetings and so forth. So that was a nice experience, and we wish them well. They spent an entire three-day period with their convention over at the Marriott. And then, along with several other council members, we celebrated the lifeguard appreciation evening at the Dunes Resort, that same evening, actually, on October 20. That's always a nice event and a great opportunity to express our appreciation for our first responders, marine as well as fire. And then, on October the, well, let's see, no, this last Saturday, along with several other council members, attended the Explore Ocean, that formerly was called the Nautical Museum, 25th anniversary event in Balboa Village. And along with that event was an unveiling of the plans for the exploration folks to do a approximate $40 million renovation of their square block of premises down there into what is truly, when completed, an outstanding destination event structure. That will form a critical part of the revitalization of the Balboa Village. They have put together a preview center in Balboa Village at the Nautical Museum property that does a very good job explaining that and conveying the excitement of that project. And I would encourage all of us, any of you that have not seen it, to stop on down there and go through that. It's well worth it. And we certainly wish Explore Ocean the very best of luck and success with their project. Coming up, we have a meeting of the Balboa Village Citizens Advisory Panel on October 26. That's at the Nautical Museum at 4:00 p.m. And we have an Exchange Club Charity Premiere Movie Showing at the Lido Theater. That is on October 27. That begins at 5:30 p.m. There's a showing of the new movie, Anonymous. Tickets are $60. And that includes getting to see the movie, as well as all the food you can eat, I understand. So hopefully it'll be a fun event, and it's for a good cause. The proceeds from the event will go to the Orange County Child Abuse Prevention Center and other youth activities in Orange County. So come on down to the Lido Theater. I'm sure you'll have a nice time. And then, I do want to remind folks that we have passed a ban on leaf blowers in our city. And we passed that ban with a six-month moratorium period. Moratorium period is over on November 11, 2011. 11, 11, 11. No more leaf blowers. So be sure to talk to your gardener about that, and make sure that your property is in compliance. Gas-powered leaf blowers, right? Gas-powered leaf blowers, yes. I was hoping not to make that distinction.
And there's a flyer that's available on the city's website.
On the website. So you Google it if you want to find it quickly. Yeah, I actually have, it's, the citation is www.nuitportbeachca.gov/leafblowers. That's fairly easy. I'm sure if you go on the city's website, you'll find it. Lastly, I would like to request an agenda item for what I hope is sometime soon, having to do with a review of the procedures for filing appeals of planning commission and zoning administrator actions. I have a concern that we've had a fair amount of activity lately of appeals being raised with no fee attached. And I'd like to have another look at this for the benefit of council as to whether there are some appropriate revisions to those procedures. And with that, we can move on. Leilani?
Consent calendar, all matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 9 are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from their consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, did you have anything to pull?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Rozansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
None, but I will be voting no on number 3.
All right. Councilmember Daigle?
None.
And Councilmember Curry?
None.
Councilmember Selich?
None.
And I have none. Do any members of the public wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? If so, please come up. Seeing none, I'll accept the motion.
Move items 1 through 9 with a negative vote by me on number 3.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Prior to reading the votes, pursuant to item 2, I will now read the ordinance and resolution titles for consent calendar. Item 3, ordinance number 2011-24 for adoption, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach approving Plan Development Amendment Number PD 2011-002 for property located at 1301 Quail Street. Item 4 is resolution number 2011-97, a resolution of the city council of the city of Newport Beach adopting temporary standards for the display of promotional temporary banners. Item 5, resolution number 2011-98, a resolution of the city council of the city of Newport Beach eliminating two vacant department assistant positions, one part-time deputy city attorney position, and amending the classification plan to create a new legal assistant position. With that, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Leilani. All right, it's time for public comments. That would be public comments on non-agenda items. These comment time period is, the comment time period is limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone that wishes to make a comment on a non-agenda State your name and let us know what's on your mind.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Dave Simon. I'm an attorney. I work in Irvine. I live in Costa Mesa. I'd like to encourage the city council to consider passing an ordinance similar to that which the Irvine City Council recently passed, which bans the sale of dogs and cats in retail stores. The Irvine City Council members who considered and passed this ordinance are not hippies. They're not skipping around, throwing flowers. They're responsible, sober businessmen and women, just as you are. And after months of consideration on this issue, they came to the determination that it's simply not reasonable, and it's not fair to the animals, to ship animals from breeders 2,000 miles away in the Midwest, a practice which can contribute to the deaths of up to 40% of the animals, and then confine them in cages while they're, while they wait to sail in local stores. In the course of considering this ordinance, the Irvine City Council also considered the protestations of the owner of the sole pet store in Irvine, who said that all of his animals come from, quote, "responsible breeders." And I'd like to address that briefly. The ASPCA finds that responsible breeders are those who breed animals in their homes. So that breeders who breed animals commercially by the hundreds in an environment in which the mothers never leave their cages, many of the animals are denied veterinary care, and are denied the ability to socialize with each other and with humans, are not responsible. So, I know it's not on the agenda tonight. I'd like to provide it as something to think about. The city of Irvine did take this important action very recently, and a number of interested people in the community would love to see this momentum continue. And I'd love to see Newport Beach take a similar and responsible and historic stand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on non-agenda items?
Hi, good evening, council members and Mayor Hen. My name is Kelly Sawyer. I'm a native, taxpayer of Newport Beach. I'm going to ask for maybe just about one extra minute tonight. That'll be it. It's written out. It's very pertinent to matters taking place in the city.
I prefer that you try to stick with the three minutes, so please do your very best with that.
I will. These photos you see before you are government photos taken by USDA inspectors of commercial breeders supplying puppies to pet stores and can be found in the scathing 69-page report of the Inspector General published May 2010. These are the parents and living conditions of pet store puppies. These are pictures of many of the same USDA violations I have read to you from legal USDA reports of breeders supplying puppies to Newport Beach. Please take a good look at them. We have obtained more evidence from violations currently and continuously taking place in the pet stores of Newport Beach, which have officially been reported to the proper agencies. Our own Newport Beach shelter, OC Humane Society, has told me they refuse to have any relationship with these stores and refuse to be associated with them in any way. iHeart Puppies is currently undergoing questioning by our Newport Beach Police Department Animal Control on the whereabouts of six shelter dogs that they stated in this media article in an interview with Corona Del Mar Chamber of Commerce meeting. It is under the city's jurisdiction to receive information about homeless shelter animals under the possession of iHeart Puppies, and the citizens are requesting records of necessary immediate medical treatment and the transfer of these animals that are required to possess by law. These are homeless shelter dogs. It is a common practice- It is a common practice for pet stores to sell puppies that are too old or unfit for sale to laboratories for research. The citizens do not accept this practice for homeless shelter dogs in Newport with no advocate, and we request documentation of proof that this did not happen. The citizens of Newport Beach are requesting the council please allow for CAPS to do a comprehensive report for the city of Newport Beach, as they did for the city of Los Angeles, West Hollywood, and Glendale. CAPS has expertise in drafting this legislation and now have a humane pet store conversion program with recommendations for the city. They can provide evidence and a plan to wean the stores of their contracts with known violators of the Animal Welfare Act. CAPS is in the process of investigating Orange County pet stores, including the ones in the jurisdiction of Newport Beach. When council members or the council as a whole decides to move forward with the process of an ordinance, that would include only the retail sale of puppies and kittens. I'll tie up right now. You will have the support of the Humane Society of the United States along with several organizations. In closing, I do not agree that there are more important issues in the city right now. Patrons, citizens, and taxpayers, organizations, which they will state, the souls of young children, which will be read a letter, are being victimized by unlawful and ethical profiteers of animal cruelty in our city. It is time for the city to step in and take responsibility in a role in protecting the citizens and its children. Thank you for your time, and we are looking forward to hearing you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to make a public comment?
Yes. My name is Amy David. I am too speaking on the behalf of the pet stores and breeders. I Heart Puppy breeder Barb Crick, whom they proudly support in the media, and it's been many different articles, has the USDA reports that have been read to the council stating the violation of Barb Crick, tying the, tying a golden retriever mother of puppies to a pole and shooting it in the head, carcass left dangling for the USDA inspector to find. I Heart Puppies claims to work with rescues, falsely promote their image, and these are, these are all lies. They're not, they're not actually selling rescue puppies as they, they are saying that they are. The Southern California Golden Retriever Rescue associate themselves, or do not associate themselves with I Heart Puppies. Newport Beach citizens and patrons are told this, however, to lure them in as consumer fraud victims. Southern California Golden Retriever Rescue actually sent I Heart Puppies a letter addressed to Brooke and Suzanne. The letter states that, it says, Suzanne and Brooke Bradford, the Southern California Golden Retriever Rescue was recently made aware that your store, I Heart Puppies, posts and distributes SCGR rescue adoption event flyers. Respectfully, we request that your store immediately stop posting and or distributing these adoption event flyers. I Heart Puppies is in the business of selling puppy mill puppies. This practice is against that purpose. They also asked that they wish, it says here, the SCGR does not wish to be associated with your store. It's practices in support of puppy mill industry. This is a, there's, as you know, many, many puppy mills where they're, they're just mass producing animals, and then there's people who are actually trying to save these animals, control the pet population. There's a lot of money that involves with just having the animal control picking up these animals on the road all the time, because what ends up happening to these puppy mill puppies that are sold in these stores is they end up going to the shelters or on the streets, and then it's, then it's feral cats and dogs running around. It's the, you know, the shelters, animal control picking them up, and it's, you know, it costs money to euthanize all these animals because there's such an animal overpopulation. So our, like Irvine did a few weeks back, we'd just like to see that no more puppy mills. Let's get the rescues adopted and try and stop the pet population. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Brenda Calvi. I'm a member of the community. Going to read a letter to you from an eight-year-old boy whose mother brought him a kitten on the rung of Newport property in Newport Beach, a racist pet experience. There are citizens of Newport Beach. He's being forced to watch his new kitten die from a fatal disease. His mother has spent thousands of veterinary bills, and that kitten has been emerging hospitalized, and today he is still forced to watch his kitten suffer and die. I'm going to read a letter from this old boy. You made my cat sick. Why did you? I'm only 80 years old. I'm going to sue you. Why did you do that? You made my cat go to the emergency room. I've been suffering for five days. His name is Zeke. No one is going to go there anymore. You're going to pay for the vet bills and hospital bills. I used to like this place, but now I know your secrets. His fever is up to 105.6 degrees. Wow. He almost died. And even today, the pet store refuses to return any calls and will not acknowledge this eight-year-old boy's letter sent to the store weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on non-agenda items?
Good evening, council members. My name is Suzanne Bradford. My daughter Brooke and I are the owners of I Heart Puppies in Corona Del Mar. And I, like everyone in this room, I'm sure, does not like puppy mills. No one likes puppy mills. Those pictures are not where our dogs come from. We have been to our breeders. We know them personally. We pick the dogs out. They fly them to our store or drive them, and they arrive at our store alive and well. And I had prepared something, but I got a little sidetracked with everything that was said tonight. I just want you to know that we are doing our best, and as far as, as these rescue animals, our, all the rescue animals that have been in our store have been provided by Valerie from Animal Control. And the letter from the, these rescue groups, I got those from our veterinarian. And I would think any rescue group would appreciate any advertising and help from anywhere they could get it. I, I look forward to providing any information that you would require to make a decision on this proposition, and we'd be happy to do so at that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Alicia Koberstein. I live in Newport Coast. I used to live in Irvine. Sometimes I'd hear other residents refer to it as being almost Newport Beach, in a nod to our close neighbors' prestigious zip code. And Newport Beach truly is a wonderful place to live. I love living here. I moved here a few years ago, and I, I'm very proud to be a citizen of Newport. Now, as Irvine continues to garner accolades for its own high desirability among the top cities in the nation in which to live, I wonder if some Newport residents might be wishing Newport Beach would be just a little bit more like Irvine. I know I do. While Irvine has taken steps toward embracing and involving culture of compassion, Newport continues to harbor businesses which support abject cruelty, as has been brought to your attention. And that's an ugly stain on our beautiful city. It's embarrassing to admit that our city still endorses these practices, which are widely held by its own residents as abhorrent, and I am talking about pet stores. The recent ban Irvine imposed on the retail sale of dogs and cats is commendable. Many other cities across the nation are moving toward this viable model of being progressive and compassionate. It would be wise for Newport Beach to follow suit. As you know, the Irvine Company has already taken the huge and admirable step of refusing to lease any of its properties to businesses which engage in the commercial sale of dogs and cats. And I'm sure they gave ample consideration to this decision and would only do so knowing that it would not hurt their sizable income and influence. In fact, it shines quite a flattering light on them. The Irvine Company has taken a noble stand on this issue. This ban wouldn't have to have an adverse effect on those who are in the business of catering to pet owners. A number of pet stores who previously sold puppies, for example, have successfully converted to a humane business model, offering only rescued animals. And there's a lot of money also to be made from the sale of all the luxury accessories which are lavished upon the pampered companion animals by discerning pet parents. It's a multi-billion dollar industry, which has seen tremendous growth in recent years as more and more people consider their animals to be legitimate members of the family and deserving of the finest lifestyle and comforts. Banning the retail sale of animals will help to put irresponsible breeders out of business, not reputable ones. It will not put Russo's, or I Heart Puppies, or other similar retailers out of business, but it will present them with an opportunity to redesign their business to have a wider public appeal. There's a growing wave of people choosing to adopt rather than shop, and there's increasing awareness among our citizens about the reality and horrors of puppy mills. The mass breeding of dogs in deplorable conditions is a practice which is doomed due to changing tides. People would rather support humane conscientious establishments rather than those that greedily profit from cruelty. It's happening in cities all around us. Please let Newport Beach join the ranks of the enlightened. Please take the responsible and judicious step of banning the retail sale of animals in our city. This is a worthy agenda item. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none? We'll move on to oral, oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilmember Daigle?
No, no reports.
And councilmember Curry?
No report.
Councilmember Selich?
On October 13th, we had a meeting of the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, and the major thing that we discussed was the Lido Marina Village Design Guidelines. We had the 90% complete documents to review at that meeting. They were sent on to the Planning Commission, which I believe the Planning Commission approved those the other night. Those will be going back to the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, and then they'll be coming before the city council shortly. We also had an update on the Central Balboa Plan and the efforts that are being made there on refining the vision statement for Corona Del Mar. We had an update on the Citizens Advisory Panel there, and one of the major things was talked about was the idea of moving the lane transition to the west side of Avocado as opposed to between Avocado and MacArthur Boulevard. Also had an update on the Bristol Street Landscaping Project, and there have been some suggestions on maybe doing some expansion of some of the landscaped areas from what was originally conceived in the Citizens Advisory Panel, so there was some discussion on that. The West Newport median landscaping, we had discussion on that and an update on the committee's work there, which has generally gotten to the point where we have refined the concept where we have general plant themes for the medians and the associated sidewalk landscaping. In the next meeting, those will be coming back in a more refined form. And then also that there was some discussion about suggestions that were made in the West Newport Citizens Advisory Panel meetings that are suggesting some other ideas that, again, were beyond the scope of the committee and would probably be best addressed in maybe a broader vision statement for the West Newport area. And I think that was pretty much the, all of the items that were discussed at the meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
No report.
And councilmember Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
Nothing.
Okay, I have one report. This would be the meeting of the Tidlins Management Committee on October the 19th. The principal agenda item at that meeting was a discussion of the various sources of revenue and expenditures associated with the Tidlins Fund that the city maintains. And with that, we'll move on to public hearings.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, this is the first of five public hearings. We'll go through them in this order. First is the 1100 Palm Street, sorry, 111 Palm Street, the Bubbles Restaurant. Then is a vacation of a sewer easement, then the Dolphin Striker Way one, then a development agreement associated with Newport Coast, and then the city council redistricting. So the first one, again, as we typically will do these, this is the Bubbles one. Usually the staff presents a brief staff report, and then the applicant has a chance to make a presentation. The council can ask that person questions. Then it's open to the public, returned to the applicant potentially, and then the council is, is able to vote at that point. So with that?
David, I think it might be, it might be well to hear from the appellant in this, in this one. So after the staff report and council discussion, we'll have the appellant come up, and then we can hear from the applicant, and then go on with the, the agenda.
Indeed. Kim first?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hen. This is an appeal of a Planning Commission approval back in July of a conditional use permit for a restaurant to reestablish a restaurant that was formerly called Bubbles, and it's located on Palm Street in the Balboa Village area. And Ms. Nova will give a brief overview of the proposed project as approved by the Planning Commission.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is McCannanova, Assistant Planner to the Planning Division. The application before you this evening is an appeal of the former Bubbles Restaurant at 111 Palm Street. The application includes a request to reestablish the restaurant use at 111 Palm, and that also includes a request for a Type 47 alcohol license for beer, wine, and liquor, and also a request to waive the required parking on site as no parking is provided at the subject property. The property is located at the corner of Palm Street and East Balboa Boulevard. There are two municipal parking lots in the vicinity, the first being the Palm Street Municipal Lot, which provides 68 parking spaces on an hourly basis, and the second being the Balboa Pier Municipal Lot, which provides 614 parking spaces on a 24-hour basis through day passes and residential overnight passes. The project was approved by the Planning Commission on July 7th of this year, then appealed by Ms. Terry Jones, representing the property owner to the south, Mr. John Hurry, the property owner, that's this property shown here. The subject property at 111 Palm is zoned mixed-use vertical, and there are residential units in the Balboa Village area. The property appellant, the applicant, I mean, the appellant property is currently zoned R2, two-unit residential. Here's a view of the site plan for the existing development on the property. Like to note that there is no parking provided on the existing property because the building does encompass most of that property area. Here's a view of the floor plan. There are, the proposed floor plan provides 28 parking, 28 seats on the outdoor dining patio and 83 seats in the interior net public area. The existing development does provide the infrastructure for a restaurant. There is an existing kitchen area, grease interceptor patio, and bar. The proposed hours of operation are from 6:00 AM to 12:00 midnight, and 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM for the outdoor dining patio in consideration of the residents in the area. I'd also like to note here that the police department has reviewed the application and recommended approval of the application. It does provide hours-
Excuse me just a minute. The staff report says until 1:00 on the weekends.
The original application was until 1:00, but that was revised to 12:00 midnight-
Thank you.
-and the applicant did agree to those hours. So again, like I was mentioning, the police department reviewed the application, and it is subject to an operator license because hours of operation are proposed after 11:00 PM. Finally, I'd like to note that there were two letters of support provided to the council following the filing of the appeal, and also- following the filing of the appeal, and also two letters of opposition filed prior to the Planning Commission meeting. The applicant and the appellant are available this evening to answer any questions you may have. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions of council at this time?
All right, any questions? Seeing none, I'd be happy to invite the appellant up to make a comment if she wishes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. I represent John Hurry-
May I, would you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Terry Jones, and I represent John Hurry, who's the owner of 101 through 107 Palm, which is on the same side of the street and basically next door to the subject property. There are eight reasons for the appeal that were cited in the appeal. I'll run through them quickly. First of all, the conditional use permit would give preferential treatment as far as parking to the owner-applicant. As an example, my client was previously not allowed to have sit-down seating in his ice cream shop because he didn't have any parking available. And I believe there's other owners that have been denied different business opportunities because of the parking situation. There would be a public nuisance, as the second item, created by noise and disturbance, especially with late hours. And unfortunately, just recently, my client's property was rezoned to R2 from the mixed use. So now we have something totally incompatible with residential property next to the bar and restaurant, and he would be forced to move the, to apply to the city for the mixed use zoning all over again. Number three and four came right out of recommendations from the police, reports that were attached to the staff reports originally, and that is alcohol licenses are already per capita higher in that area than some of the surrounding areas. The crime rate is also 27.15% higher already, and with the noise and the late hour type business, this could raise that figure even higher and be detrimental to the public. The application itself is rather misleading. It took me a while till I went through the whole thing to discover that there really is no restaurant business and there is no specific business for this property. The property's listed for sale. This is being used as a marketing tool. Instead of remodeling the property or fixing the property up, they're using a conditional use permit as a marketing tool. And there's really no definite factual basis. It's all based on speculation at this point. Another reason we appealed is we believe an appraiser should be involved. Although the city does not require an appraisal with an application, it would be more than useful, and it may support their application, it may not support their application, it might show they have an overpriced building, and that's why they don't have a buyer. But basically, the information would be useful, and it's, the burden is on the applicant to get the conditional use permit approved based on findings and information, and an appraisal is one of those missing pieces of information in this case. The same way with the fact that there is no explanation for why the previous restaurant closed, what kind of problems they encountered, why it hasn't been a restaurant for the last 23 years. So it's another huge piece of information that would be helpful to know and would form a better foundation for the application if they did provide more information. And especially that information should not be ignored since that was a previous use, and that's the purpose of their conditional use permit, to go back to that previous use. The residential property values in the immediate area will also suffer from any public nuisance or noise that's created. So overall, there's a lack of evidence and information for this application. As I said before, the burden is on the applicant to provide sufficient evidence and information so that the permit could be issued or denied. As far as the legal standard for this type of decision is always the, whether it's arbitrary or capricious, decision, and an arbitrary decision simply means that it's without regard to the facts and circumstances presented or in disregard of the evidence. And there's just not enough evidence is really the whole basis of our appeal. It's forcing my client to make decisions as to his property, which was mixed use. Now it's R2, and I'll have to go back to mixed use in order to make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Are there any questions from council for Ms. Jones? Seeing none, thank you. Is the applicant here?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Carol McDermott, Government Solutions. I'm representing the applicant in this case, and I wanted to indicate several things. First of all, we're very appreciative that the Planning Commission recognized that the reopening of this site as a restaurant will contribute to the revitalization of the Balboa Peninsula. We believe also that they established reasonable conditions on hours of operation consistent with the Police Department recommendations. They recognize that the operator will need to get a license through the Police Department to accommodate the use. And I want to emphasize that this property owner feels very strongly, as the Planning Commission and the staff agreed about, that in fact, a use permit goes with the property. And they are willing to commit to all the conditions of approval. If they sell or lease the site, that will be under those circumstances, and they are committing to it, as will the potential purchaser or operator. And a use permit's conditions go with the land, and we very much accept all of those conditions. We'll pass that on to a future operator, but they've been unable to get an operator to come in without the approval of a use permit. In this particular economy, the margins on restaurants are tight enough that without an approval, they would not be able to proceed. So we're very anxious for this to contribute to the revitalization of the Balboa Village area. I've attended the Neighborhood Revitalization meetings and recognize that this is consistent with the goals of that committee, and I would respectfully request your concurrence with the Planning Commission and would certainly be available this evening to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Questions for Carol? Yes, I had it. How long has this location been vacant?
Several years, at least, over a year.
The uses have, the uses have varied over time, and it has not been a restaurant in a number of years, but they tried various activities, including art galleries and other sorts of things, and the economy's been very difficult for them, needless to say. But they always retain the infrastructure for a restaurant, hoping that there'd be a point at which that would be feasible. They have several offers on the table now from viable restaurant operators that they're anxious to pursue once, if you were to agree with granting the approval.
Just one other question. I drove by today and took a little closer look. It's looking sort of tacky on the outside.
It is.
That building is in real need of repair. Is the current owner planning to do that, or just wait and hope he sells it before he?
Well, because the offers are sort of on the table, everyone who has indicated an interest in it has also made a commitment to refurbish the exterior. So you would expect that to be a part of it.
Mayor Protem Gardner?
I don't have any questions for Carol specifically.
Okay, thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
At first, this seemed to me like, okay, well, whatever. But the more I thought about it, the more it brought out sort of philosophical questions about how we do these things, that we have, we don't seem to have an even playing field. It says here that all, you know, each parking, there's no precedent, page seven. Approval of reduction required parking would not serve as a precedence. Each applicant is unique and considered on its own merits. But we don't really do that. Most of the time, we just say, hey, here are the rules. And here we're taking, we have existing businesses, like in Corona Del Mar, parking, hey, you want, you have a restaurant, you've got to find parking, you've got to lease those parking lots privately, and that comes off your top. That's required. And those are existing businesses that we often turn down. And here we're saying, well, we don't even know what kind of business you're going to be, we assume you're going to be a restaurant, but we're going to give you the parking thing. And I'm not objecting to that, per se, but I'm saying we're not, we're being very unequal and very uneven in the way we handle these things. It also disturbs me a little bit that we're setting conditions for an operator that we don't even know. We're going to have happy hour until 9:00 p.m. Whew, that's a long happy hour. So somebody, the wrong person comes in, and even though we've got some conditions, we've got, we've got a bar going on instead of the restaurant. So it just seems to me that, that we don't play fair with it. We should have, either, either we say, okay, everybody gets to do their own parking thing, and you've got a public parking lot, I mean, Corona Del Mar has a couple of public parking lots, you get to use those, you don't have to worry about your parking, or we all have to worry about parking, and you all either have to pay the in-lufy or whatever. So I just think that, that this thing is just, it's sort of brought this to a head, that we are not even-handed in the way we deal with these things.
Councilmember Hill?
Mr. Mayor, I guess I would take a slightly different path at it than the Councilwoman Gardner has. This is old Newport. It is an existing building, like much of old Newport, that is built property line to property line. And so it was grandfathered in from the very beginning with respect to parking, and an item that made that easier to accept, if you will, was the amount of public parking that was around this building. Since this building has been built, the amount of public parking has actually increased because we have purchased the old market and increased the size of the parking lot that's diagonally across the street from this particular site. Much of the peninsula is built this way. If we were to apply parking standards to it, we'd have to tear down every building on the peninsula. And then we couldn't even replace them because by the time you put cars on the sites, there's no room to put the building. And so I think that, that at least my knowledge of the peninsula, since I've been on the peninsula in the 70s, is this is the way we have treated each of the pieces of property on the peninsula that is built in history, property line to property line. And, and that's why we have a public-
As I say, I don't necessarily object to that. I'm just saying that we don't carry that same kind of common sense approach around, that we have a different standard in Corona Del Mar, and some of that is pretty much no parking on the lot. And, and that's my concern, not this one particular project, but what the point it brings up is that we are inconsistent in our application of these standards so often.
I'm worried about Corona Del Mar a lot myself.
Okay, other comments? All right, I'll take comment from the public on this item. Anyone wish to make a comment?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Craig Smith. I'm a resident of the peninsula. I've been there for 12 years. I'm familiar with the Bubbles Building. I should also say that I'm a member of the Citizens Committee for Revitalization of Balboa Village. I've been in the Bubbles Building when it was an art gallery, and there were evenings there where there were artist receptions and food and beverage was served, and I did not notice any undue noise or community problems associated with that. I support the idea of a quality restaurant in the village. I think that's something that's important to the future of the Nautical Museum and the Balboa Theater and the other improvements that we're trying to make there. I would disagree with the previous comment about lowering property values in the village. I think having vacant buildings in the village does more towards lowering property values than it would be to have a thriving restaurant that attracted a high quality of visitors to the area. Thank you.
Just a question.
Craig?
Not, not of Craig, but he made me think of something, that this is, we're giving them, or suggesting they use public parking. And I know when the theater went through its thing with the Coastal Commission, had to jump through hoops to use the public parking. Does this become an issue as far as are we impeding coastal access in some way, or are we able to make that decision without any, any response to, from the commission?
Well, in the case of the Balboa Theater, it operated for many years with 450 seats and use of the beach parking lot. And in the revised form, it's going to have 300 seats, so reduce the number of seats.
No, no, I'm not suggesting this, I don't care about the theater. I'm just saying the theater had to go through a long, very, Carol remembers that, difficult process trying to get okay to use that as part of the parking that we provided. Has this become an issue for the city with, with something like a restaurant, which is going to be using additional public parking?
So that's a question of staff, correct?
Yeah, it's a staff question.
Okay.
Anybody?
Oh, okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll-
Just jump right in.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner, the proposed use of the restaurant is a reestablishment of a restaurant that previously existed there. There is not an expansion of the use in terms of what was there before in looking at the parking requirements. This is not something that will require Coastal Commission consideration.
Well, the theater was a reestablishment of its existing use, and as Craig says, with even less demand, and yet it had to go through the Coastal Commission for it, specifically for parking, among other things.
I just wanted to mention that the, this is a reduction in the parking requirement. So rather than a waiver, as we often mentioned, the code actually states it as a reduction in the parking requirement. So it's a little bit different. And there, I'd also like to mention that the, the applicant has agreed, as a condition of approval, to pay parking passes through the municipal lot-
For employees.
-to help offset the costs.
For employees, I saw that. I, I was just, that was just a general question that, that, the last thing we want is for the Coastal Commission to be unhappy with us because we have somewhat impacted.
I would disagree with that. I think, if I may, I think the last thing we want is to continue to have an area in decline. I mean, this represents an amazing opportunity to make the area more vibrant. We should be helping these people. You know, they're here to take a risk in their business and not, you know, harrying them about how many hoops they have to jump through, but really to support the reestablishment.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is George, George Schroeder, and I was at the Planning Commission meeting when this came up, and some of you may know, typically I don't want to see an increase in liquor licenses in, on the peninsula, but I did speak in favor of this, I gave my qualified support for these reasons. I do have the concerns that Nancy does mention, but I do think I'm more, I fall more in line with Councilwoman Rush Hill, and that this is an existing building built, you know, lot line to lot line, and there isn't any use there that could be put in that would meet the on-site parking requirements. It's in, it's, it's, it's in an older part of town. It doesn't mean that we waive parking requirements in Corona Del Mar where parking can be met. This was used as an eating and drinking establishment for many, many years. If it didn't close down and was still in operation, it would still be using the public parking spaces, which they do use. Probably about nine months of the year, there was no issue with parking down there. The months that there is an issue, it wouldn't make a difference if we, if the parking lot was twice as big because there isn't enough parking for anybody. So the people that are down there walking around, if they're walking around on the street, if they want to go in and get a meal and, you know, enjoy the ambiance, go to the Balboa Theater, hopefully that'll be reopened. Again, if we build a new theater at a different location, they would be required to meet their new parking. We have the old Balboa Theater, the old parking, the old Port Theater in Corona Del Mar, no on-site parking. Okay, so, you know, about the only thing that can be built that can accommodate on-site parking is residential. Everything else, you just can't do it. If there was a location down there right now that's being used as a retail store or a beauty parlor, and they wanted to intensify the use, do a restaurant and bar that would require a lot more parking, I would not support waiving their parking for their new intensified use. So that's why I give my qualified support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just would like to clarify for Councilwoman Gardner regarding the reason for the coastal approval of the theater. And what happened there was they had to get a use permit to allow the, the service and the reception area on the roof. And once, and that was a discretionary use, that's why it went to the Coastal Commission. Once it went to the Coastal Commission, then they had to go through all the hoops regarding the parking. In this case, it doesn't generate that. I just want that in the record.
Thank you. That gives me peace of mind.
I'm glad someone has peace of mind.
Mayor Hen and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. I don't live on the peninsula. My awareness of this issue stems from having been present at a meeting of the Balboa Village Business Improvement District where the members were considering endorsing a letter in support of the approval, primarily on the theory that any business was better than no business. After that meeting, I went back and looked at the Planning Commission meeting minutes that are in your agenda packet, and I saw that the matter was somewhat reluctantly approved by several of the commissioners, who questioned the wisdom of attempting to put conditions, as Mayor Protem Gardner has mentioned, on a property when the tenant- as Mayor Protem Gardner has mentioned, on a property when the tenant, or even the kind of tenant, has not been definitely identified. Their principal concerns were questioning the need to prepare for yet another hard liquor license in an area where the police say there's already one license for every 51 residents. And the parking management plan, which seems to consist of nothing but an assurance that there will be no extra parking demand, because the patrons of the restaurant would already be in the area anyway, something that doesn't actually make a lot of sense, since if they spend any time in the restaurant, that time is going to be taken away from what other people could be using in the parking lots. I think those concerns remain valid, and if anything, they're even stronger now than they were then, because between the Planning Commission meeting and now, as the mayor has mentioned, the almost immediately adjacent Explore Ocean attraction has unveiled its preliminary plans. Not only will Explore Ocean, if successful, heighten the parking crunch, but it offers the vision of a revitalized neighborhood pushed more in the direction of a family and child-friendly environment. Rather than preparing for, and indeed inviting, another hybrid restaurant bar, Explore Ocean would seem to create the need and the possibility for the success of an affordable ocean-themed family restaurant. So, I would postpone placing conditions on this property until it becomes clear that a more compatible tenant cannot be identified. Regarding the parking, adding new parking intensive uses, which would be new, since the building has been abandoned recently and had non-restaurant uses earlier, without providing enough new parking to service them, seems to me only to be aggravating an already bad situation. I would suggest that applicants such as this one, who are creating new parking needs, be required to pay into a city fund dedicated to purchasing enough land and/or infrastructure to handle the increased need. I don't see any such condition in the proposal before you. In fact, on handwritten page 103, under the request, in addition to those vouchers for the employees, the applicant seems to have been offering to purchase 32 vouchers each year for parking in the public lots, and the city does not seem to have taken them up on that offer. And despite the clarification, I'm still confused about the Coastal Commission issue, because on handwritten page 21, you'll see that condition 14 has been stricken out, and that originally was the condition that the applicant would have to seek Coastal Commission approval, and the original staff report presented to the Planning Commission said that that was because of the intensification of the existing use, so I'm still confused about that. Thank you.
Okay, do we have other comment?
Hello, Mayor and City Council, I'm James F. Guchardo. I own the building directly adjoining the property on the west side. It's a mixed-use building, I have a office occupancy downstairs, but the upstairs is entirely residential. Downstairs, I have a high-profile financial management company that rents roughly the front half of the building, it's their main headquarters for six of their offices throughout the United States and Mexico. The rear half of the building on the lower floor is my real estate rental company. Upper floor, entirely residential. My concern is, I have on my residential units balcony looking directly over at this patio here, and a large rooftop deck that's directly adjacent there. I welcome a restaurant, an eating establishment there, but with this application stating, "Allow an eating and drinking establishment with late hours and an ABC license," that translates into a bar. And if you Google bars near that address, there's five within 500 feet of that property In addition to the cigar shop that's at, directly across the alley from, on Palm Street. Since that was allowed to operate as a lounge, I've lost tenants that have moved out, and they don't even have a use permit to operate, but they've moved out because I can't provide them with a, what the lease states, a peaceably and quietly have, hold, and enjoy the premises there. And my also concern is that we work late into the night, both the financial company and I do, and to have that directly next door, operating in a bar environment, it would really certainly harm our business, the ability to operate my business there. And I don't know if that was taken into consideration, I was out of the country when this application was filed, I only recently found out about it. Thank you.
Honorable council staff, folks, my name is Robert Duff. I own a unit in the Rendezvous condominiums, which is 24 condominiums directly across the street, 60 feet on an angle from the Bubbles Bar we're discussing here. The west side, or with the north side of the Rendezvous, all has balconies overlooking Palm, my balcony overlooks Palm, and this bar before, in connection with this prior approvals, and going through the deal, had kind of the same things, I'm going to really quick try to go through with you. One was that they didn't allow any doors to be open, they had to all be closed, they didn't allow any loud music, it had to be music like harp music, they didn't allow the doors out to the patio to be closed, they didn't allow loud music in the patio, lighting. In addition to that, there's, with the no parking in connection with the unit, or the building, all the cabs, or whoever become picking up people, would be in the front door, should be in the front door, as opposed to Palm. Along Palm and along the front streets, we have people who put tables, and they put all kinds of little things out there, and they drink there, so all those things should be considered in connection with patios on the dedicated sidewalk, and all other items that would be connected with noise, because again, we approved a 24-unit condominium as a residential unit across the street, and this is, you know, it's been there for 20-some years. The other thing that I would like to mention, they said there was five bars, I went down and took a look, and there's eight bar, eight places that sell alcohol within two blocks of this bar/restaurant. If you take a proposal for a bar/restaurant to go to 2:00 in the morning, it definitely doesn't become a dinner house after 10:00, it becomes a bar, in connection with my experience. The other thing that I'd like to comment on is the wisdom of this council, when they don't, they've owned, zoned as R2 zoning, someone could see that the property next door and across the alley, in connection with the future, was either going to be residential or some type of offices or something, so I see that as a great wisdom in this council. The last thing I'd like to mention is, I've been down in the Balboa since the early 80s, and been a part of the what's going on, I do support the cultural center, I report what Mr. Hen mentioned in connection with what's going to happen in Balboa, and to spend $40 million a block away from what's going to be a nightclub and a bar, when we're trying to make a cultural center out of Balboa, with eight bars within two blocks, I think maybe we probably have enough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
WR building, I reside in the Balboa Village bid residential. I've been there since 65. I first came to Newport Beach back in the early 40s. As far as the parking, it's always been a problem, but give the CAP a chance to address parking. I think that's where you're really going to hear some fantastic arguments and whatnot. Main reason I came here tonight was looking at the report, I did not attend the public hearing before the Planning Commission, I was startled to see that there were 35 active liquor licenses in Reporting District 12, that's B Street to 7th Street. I called Ms. Nova, she told me to get hold of Detective Moore at the Police Department, made two calls to him, went over to verify my figures, and we could only find 24, he could only find 24. The interesting thing is, there are, in that area, the village itself, there are two off-sale, one general, the liquor store, which, there's always been one or two in the area, and there is an off-sale beer and wine, which is a fuel dock. Of those 24 licenses, three are between the fire station and 7th Street. There's a beer and wine, the market has a general license, and then there's the Newport Harbor Yacht Club. Within the bid itself, there are seven licenses issued to boats. Consequently, there are eight watering holes, if you would call, six of them beer and wine, five general bona fide eating place, and there's only one true bar that does not serve food. Now, I don't think I have scars on my elbows from the old red carpet that was in the rear end of where Bubbles is now, I thought I was at one time, but this area has always been a visitor-friendly area, we tolerate it. There's new people coming into the area, if they're not aware of it, man, clean their glasses, open their eyes. The other thing is, that troubles me, and hopefully it comes up before the CAP, is that whole Balboa Village district. We, with Central Newport Community Association, support between Adams and B Street. But if you look at the general plan, and then what the consistency of the zoning to comply with the general plan, you have no place to rebuild anything, nothing. You have the county sanitation district property listed as multiple use. You've got the post office listed as public facility, that's a private facility at least, too. There's been talk in the past about closing it, it could happen again, then the poor owner's going to have to go through a general plan, change the whole bid, costs them a lot of money. The appellant here, granted, they were commercial, they are on the list now, asking for, and I forget what the terminology is, but for an extension up to 10 years to continue the uses they have. There's a major issues in that area, we have been a stepchild, and there's a group of us within the area now, that are trying to express our concerns. I'm just, I have partygoers left over from the saloon, and a couple other places coming down the alley, I've learned to sleep through, put up with it. It happens. You can walk down on the Edgewater, where there's private parties, it's no different. I personally support it, I think it's a real asset. Having attended the bid meetings, liquor licenses come up when this issue, they were concerned, some of the operators. I don't think there's an overabundance. The best thing about this restaurant, in my eyes, is the floor plan. I see no pool tables, I see maybe one, two TVs over the bar, it's not going to be a place for the groups to go on Sunday and watch football games and baseball games and things like that, but I think it will be a real asset. Dillmans was there for years, Shore House is there now, Dillmans, people walk, I don't drive to go to the, out to dinner at the village, I walk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for further discussion and perhaps a motion.
I just have a concern, I think that the public has been very persuasive that, you know, there's a place for this, but I do have a concern that we're creating a 333 Linda Isle situation, and I'm wondering if we should condition, or if we can condition it better in terms of some noise abatements or something, or leave some leeway there that if we need it in the future. I don't think we've said anything about what height the walls and the patio are, usually we make them very, very low, like three feet, but I think at 333, didn't we change that, Ed, as far as, we did some things there to help with the noise situation.
We did, I don't know that they would be appropriate here, though, but, yeah, we basically attenuated on all sides the outdoor dining patio in that situation, but I don't know that we have the same situation here.
Councilmember Curry?
Can I ask, staff, we have an operator permit now for establishments such as this, is this operator, when they're identified, required to get an operator's permit?
Yes, Councilmember Curry, that condition will run with the land or with the CUP if it's approved by the City Council, so regardless of who the operator will be in the future, if they're open past 11:00, they're required to get the permit.
And presumably, at that point in time, when that operator permit's granted, we have the opportunity to come back and revisit some of these issues related to sanitation, et cetera?
Well, those are related, that is administered through the Police Department, so it does not come back to the Planning Commission or the City Council.
But the Chief of Police would have the opportunity to...
That is correct.
Introduce those conditions.
To put on additional conditions of approval.
Like, say, a Plexiglas extension of a wall or something, is, was his authority extend that far?
Well, we would have to, you know, have a good cause and effect for that type of condition, and I think that the 333 restaurant and outdoor dining area was a different situation, that ended up being completely enclosed and sound attenuated, this is not what's being recommended as part of this approval. But if, you know, and the other thing is that we do have noise standards within the community, regardless of the conditional use permit, so if there is, if noise is becoming a public nuisance, then we can come back with the CUP and add additional conditions of approval.
Councilmember Hill?
It seems to me that we're discussing issues for which we don't know if there will ever be problems. It operated as a restaurant and a bar for years and years and years, with entertainment, and no one has presented the fact that there were issues at that point in time, and it's been a while since I've driven by, but it seems like the patio, the patio is totally encased on three sides, the only side that it might be open at all is on the roadside, and I think that's even a high wall, I'm not sure, but I think it's an eight-foot wall. So, I mean, we're discussing items that, I mean, we're trying to solve problems that don't exist.
One of the experiences I've had is, on council, is just having to fight decisions that were made years before, which didn't anticipate things, so it does make you a little gun-shy as to what the future brings.
Councilmember Curry?
Well, just to say, you know, we have spent tens of thousands of dollars on signs, directional signs, sidewalk treatments, trees, and parking, to attract businesses to this neighborhood, and now that we have one here, it seems to me that we want to take the appropriate action to encourage its development. You know, I share some of Councilmember Gardner's concerns about equity relative to Coron del Mar, but the difference here is that we're surrounded by 700 parking spaces that are available for use, and are often empty during the evening hours, because they're basically beach parking. So, I believe that, you know, plus we have the opportunity, when the operator's permit comes up, to consider, you know, sort of some of the operating characteristics of whatever restaurant might in fact go into that space, so I would be comfortable in supporting the project.
Councilmember Daigle?
Is that a motion?
It is, I would recommend, what's the appropriate action, I don't know if it's a staff recommendation or not?
Uphold the Planning Commission's...
To uphold the Planning Commission's action.
I would second that motion, I think this is just a great opportunity to make the area more vibrant, and any of those opportunities that come on, come our way, we just really need to encourage and nurture and support.
Councilmember Hill?
I do have a question or two about the conditions that were placed on it. Condition number 12 states that it's the share fare traffic fees, and notes that they would be given a credit for the commercial fees, and then charged for the delta between that and the restaurant. My question is, wasn't the site, are fair share fees charged per site, and if that's the case, weren't they charged when it was a restaurant, and so, do we have the right to charge it again, or were fair share fees not in existence when the restaurant was first built?
I don't believe fair share fees were in existence when the original restaurant was approved for the site, so the change in the intensity would require that fee.
Anything else?
And then, my second question is, condition number 43, there should be no live entertainment or dancing allowed on the premise. Bubbles Balboa Club, I don't think they had dancing, but they did have entertainment, I remember hearing the Mills Brothers sing there one night, and it seemed to be a very, I'm not that old, but they were old.
I bet it was black and white, Dad.
I was thinking real hard about the appropriate remark just now, would you beat me to it?
The Mills Brothers were great, and it seems to me that, once again, I mean, this is that kind of a district, why would we put that kind of condition on it when that's the way it was when it operated before, once again with no known problems?
Mayor Hen?
I guess to be specific, I would ask to amend the motion to strike condition 43 from the, from the conditions, if there would be a second for that.
Okay, any other comment here? I would like to make a few comments, then. Okay. Any other comment here? I would like to make a few comments, then. You know, I'm not one that has been an easy sell to approve additional liquor sales and expanded liquor sales on the peninsula. We have more than enough of that already. On the other hand, this is another example where we have to walk the line here between bona fide restaurants that are good for the community and that sell liquor. And this is a situation that I think meets that kind of a test. The closing hours by the use permit will be limited to midnight, so it can't be open any later than that. That takes it out of the watering-hole-bar category for me. And we are requiring the ability to serve food up until, the full menu, up until thirty minutes before closing time. In addition to that, we do have this operator's license requirement from the police department. That's not just a requirement that would be put in place at initiation of that license. It's one that runs and can be modified at any time based upon evidence that it's not operating as it should, and could include, in fact, a requirement at later on to mitigate excessive noise by the best available method, whether it be a higher partition or some other sort of solution. And so I do view this as a, as a restaurant. And we need that in the area. The parking situation is completely unsolvable for this location, and it's just, it's a function of the reality of where the village is right now and probably will be forever, as far in the future as I can see. So I'm not concerned about the parking issue. And I am concerned about the revitalization of the village. With regard to Councilmember Hill's suggested amendment, though, I, it is important to me that this be, continue to be a restaurant. And as we start introducing live entertainment and things like dancing and so forth, then we do start to run the risk of, real, real risk of noise violations and disturbance, especially for the neighbors. It's just awfully hard to do, to do live music without it being loud, live music. And so I would, I would not be in favor of eliminating condition number 43. I'm certainly in favor of going forward with this as the planning commission has approved it. I think it's good for the community. So I'll be-
I just would also say that the police report, you know, as far as the police report concerned, there's no live entertainment, when they gave their judgment.
Yes, they recommended no live entertainment as well, and I would be in support of that. So those are my comments. Now, I guess, so we have a motion, and as amended and accepted by the moving party, that we approve the planning commission decision here, but with the change of that item number 43 being eliminated. Did you wish to say anything further, Councilmember Curry? Okay. Do we have any further discussion?
No, just that I would support the original motion, but I will not support this one.
Perhaps we should vote on Mr. Hill's amendment then separately, on a standalone basis, and then vote on, excuse me?
All right, so-
I'll make an alternative motion that we just accept the recommendation as per the planning commission.
Second-
So that was the original motion?
So now we're back to the beginning, yes.
Right, yeah, that's fine.
So let's, let's, let's vote on the alternative motion. All in favor, please?
Clarification?
Yeah.
Are we gonna vote on the live entertainment issue then separately? Is that the intent?
No.
No?
It's out.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the title for the resolution number 2011-99, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving use permit number UP 2011-012 for an eating and drinking establishment located at 111 Palm Street, with Councilmember Selich voting no, the motion carries.
Okay. Onto the next item.
Mayor and councilmembers, this next item is the vacation of a sewer easement at 715 St. James Road. This may be a fairly matter-of-fact item. I don't know if you'd prefer a staff report on this. If you'd not, welcome to take public comment and consider the recommended action.
Does anyone see need for a staff report here? No. All right, then I'll open this item up for public comment. I see, okay, that's something else. All right.
I would move the recommended action.
She's trying as hard as she can to be invisible down there. All right. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right. And let's see. I did ask for public comment. We have none. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the title for resolution number 2011-100, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach ordering the vacation of an existing ten-foot wide sewer easement at 715 St. James Road and directing the city clerk to record the same with the county recorder's office. With that, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Onto item number 12, the MacArthur Boulevard Dolphin Stryker Way appeal. With regard to this, we will have a staff report, and then I'd like to ask Councilmember Hill to make any statement he would wish, since he is the appellant. And then the applicant can make a statement. We'll do public comment, and then give the applicant a chance to wrap up before we take a vote. So with that, can we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me. Councilmember Hill, would you like to, why don't you make whatever statement you wish about this to start with, since you were the applicant?
Just a very brief statement. When I saw this come before the planning commission, and I had the opportunity to review the staff report, I was very pleased with the direction of the staff. I believe that this is a longstanding, non-performing area of the city that has greater potential if a tenant mix were to take place. And I saw this project as suggesting that kind of a tenant mix change. And, and I guess I was quite surprised when I saw the planning commission deny it. Based upon some of the issues that they discussed, when the applicant, I learned, was willing to make changes, I thought that it well worth the opportunity to re-review with those changes, because I think we should be doing everything and meeting one of our priorities that we establish as a council is working to revitalize our non-performing areas, which I see this project as doing just that. And therefore, I called it back to the council for further consideration.
All right, thank you. Now the staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Ung will give an overview of the proposed project. And without much further discussion, I just do want to remind the council that this is a de novo hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the City Council. My name is Rosalyn Ung, Associate Planner of the Planning Division. I'm here to present a brief presentation with regard to the proposed development before you tonight. The subject property is located on the west side of MacArthur Boulevard between Corinthian Way and Newport Place Tribe. The subject property is a part of a three-parcel site that is zone restaurant site one of the Newport Place Plan community. As you can see, parcel one, which is the subject site, the Sega Indian is parcel number two, and the Classic Q is parcel three. All of these three parcels make up of the restaurant site one. They all have a shared parking arrangement with each other with a common parking lot in the middle. On September the 22nd, the planning commission considered the application to redevelop the subject property, which consists of the construction of two single-story buildings with a total of 13,525 square feet, a new 59-space parking lot, new landscaping of approximately 8,850 square feet. On September the 22nd, the planning commission considered these applications, and after much discussion, the planning commission denied the project based on the following concerns. The increase in intensity of use while inadequately addressing parking through a waiver and off-site parking. The one-year term of the new off-site parking lease does not satisfy the zoning code that requires off-site parking be permanently available. The justification for the modification permit to allow relief from the landscaping standard is not practical difficulty. New access from MacArthur Boulevard is not consistent with the existing design, which does not provide direct access into the commercial parking lots and may interrupt traffic flow along MacArthur Boulevard. As mentioned before, on October the 1st, Councilmember Ross Hill appealed the planning commission action. And there's a brief reasons as to why the appeal was filed. In response to the appeal, the applicant has modified the project as followed. As you can see on the, on the left-hand, I'm sorry, on the left-hand side, which showed the original site plan that has the outline of a, the building A, which is a smaller building at this corner, and the larger building, which is building B, is the largest of the two at this location. The revised site plan show the elimination of one of the suite at this location, as you can see, and the addition of eight additional parking stalls in replace of the reduction in the square The reduction in the building area results in a reduction of the square footage needed. The transfer of development rights request to the subject property from the Lexus dealership site will be reduced proportionally, which translate to approximately deduction from 1,600 to approximately 400 square feet. With regard to the use permit requests, which consists of the parking waiver, the off-site parking request, and the parking management plan, the parking waiver has been reduced from thirteen parking spaces to three parking spaces due to the reduction in the building area and the change of the operational characteristic of the proposed fast food to take out only. As you can see, the total revised parking space that will be provided onsite will be sixty-five, and the reduction on the off-site parking from thirty-two to sixteen parking space. So therefore, the project has a total of eighty-one parking As mentioned before, the parking waiver is now being reduced dramatically from thirteen to three parking space. Under the shared parking arrangement with Sega and Classic Q Restaurant, there will be a surplus of nine parking spaces during a brief peak hour at lunchtime. This slide shows the location of parking structure in relation to the subject property. This is the subject property and the adjacent parking lot, which is the usage bank structure. That's where the off-site parking is located. In summary, the applicant has modified the project, thereby addressing the commission considers by reducing the size of the project by 1,174 square feet, reducing the transfer request from the Lexus dealership site from 1,620 to 400 square feet, changing the proposed land use mix by reducing the general commercial area from 8,525 to 7,351 square feet, with changing the proposed fast food use to take out limited use only, increasing the number of onsite parking from fifty-nine to sixty-five spaces, thereby reducing the parking waiver request from thirteen to three parking spaces, and reducing the off-site parking request from thirty-two to sixteen parking spaces. Should the city council wish to approve the modified project, there are a number of entitlement requests from the, for the consideration by the council, including the draft resolution for approval. Staff is requesting that condition number two in the draft resolution be deleted as it does not applicable to the donor sites. This condition is only required if the donor site have vested development rights. Here are the following applications that are applicable to the project. It's an amendment to the Plan Community Development Plan by changing the zoning designation from restaurant site one to general commercial site eight. Transfer of development rights, which allow the transfer of forty-eight unbilled hotel units from the Fletcher Jones site and 400 square feet from the Lexus site. The conditional use permits would applicable for the three-space parking waiver, the sixteen existing off-site parking, and the approval of the parking management plan. The waiver of the development agreement. The modification permit to deviate from the interior landscaping setback requirements, which is one tree for every twenty-five linear feet. This is the site plan, the modified site plan, that the applicant is now proposing before the city council. I also include a landscaping plan. This is a conceptual landscaping plan to show the location what the modification permit is requesting. Technically-
Hold on a minute. So are we supposed to be adding the first two lines as to what's required, and the third line is what's actually being given us? So it's thirty-one and are required, or am I reading that wrong? Eighteen for the entire site, or just for the?
Well, the total tree required for the entire site is eighteen.
Okay.
That's including the five required trees along the interiors setback at this location.
So those trees are being provided someplace else?
Yes. This is, the trees are being provided throughout the parking lot here, instead of this location.
Thank you.
And that concludes staff presentation. And staff, it's available to answer your questions at this time. I just want to mention, there's a couple studies that's as part of the project, which is the traffic study and the mitigation measures that's going with the mitigated negative decoration. And the city council options that's available for you at this time is to either deny the project, approve the project, refer the modifications to the planning commission, or direct the applicant to modify the project.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further questions from council? All right. Then I'd like to invite the applicant to make some comments.
Mr. Mayor and fellow councilmen, my name is Todd Bridgeway. I am the applicant, owner. I really am gonna limit, I'm gonna, I don't know that I should say anything, because I've made such a substantial change from when we presented this to the planning commission. I have Todd Stoughton-Burrell, who is my architect, and he can make a presentation. I brought Mark Shattinger, who is the landscape architect, if there are any questions there. I would make a couple of comments. And Tony did, what's his name, Ballard, showed up? Okay, good. Well, I'm gonna make a comment right now. I'm sorry, Carl. I didn't see him. This site was designed originally for masses of people, and there's actually an eight-lane highway out there. And I believe that our level of service is A. B, it is A. So when the planning commission said they were worried about traffic interruption, it, I couldn't, none of us could understand it. We have a level of service out here, A, number one. All traffic is going other directions. The seventy-three and fifty-five freeway were built, the off-ramp from the airport, they have an on-ramp coming directly in. Traffic really goes in a different direction. What the site has, though, is 125,000 people within a five-minute drive- What the site has, though, is 125,000 people within a five-minute driving time. It has an old, well, I believe it's a six-lane striped highway. It's actually designed to be an eight-lane highway. It used to be a freeway. Remember, there was, at one time, this was going to be massive amounts of buildings and people, but the world has changed. Mr. Hill appropriately identified it as a decaying area. What makes it vibrant and new is obviously the access. We do have a bank. I have a lease on my desk from that bank. We do have proposals from food users. It's very important, the entire access and the circulation as designed is important for those users. With that, I think I'll just turn it over to Todd Stoughton-Burrell, because I think the staff report is well done. It speaks for itself. I made significant modifications. We, as a team, made significant modifications. There are 202 parking spaces on that site. We're a daytime use. We're not a nighttime use. We're probably nine to six. I assume we'll have some electronic-type users, cell phones, that type of thing, food users, but it's a shared parking arrangement. And I am required pursuant to my negotiation with other restaurants, because they have to approve a CCNR amendment to slow recode and restripe the entire parking lot. So it will look significantly different. There is virtually no landscaping on their property, except for a big hedge. There will be all new landscaping on my property. And the backside of the property to the south faces Glide World Laboratories. It's where they get their deliveries. It's where they have their trash compactor. That's a big white thing there. It's an entire industrial delivery. What we have in the back is a seven-foot sidewalk with delivery and door entrances back there. So having said that, let me introduce Todd.
Just a minute. Todd, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Water quality. The only thing I saw was that you were going to take water from one storm drain to another storm drain, but that's, there were references to water management practices. I didn't see any curb cutouts to divert rainwater into the landscape or anything. Are there, is there anything to help improve water quality in the project?
Well, actually, there's no deterioration of water quality. You have a thirty-
No, I know, there's perhaps no deterioration. Was there anything to actually to improve it? You know, part of what we're trying to do is improve water quality. I just didn't know if there was something that I hadn't noticed in the report.
I honestly don't have my civil engineer here. I know we have six-foot planter areas, which is significant for a commercial project. All those hedge rows, that is entire pervious material there, and we have a 30-foot landscape area. Nancy, quite honestly, I don't have the answer.
All right. Well, something you might want to consider, though, are the curb cutouts, because they just, as I say, they reduce that first runoff from the rain, and they go into the landscaped area, and so, something to consider.
Yeah, well, I thought we did it. To be honest with you, I thought we did it.
I would expect that from a former head of the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee.
Todd, couple questions for you.
Yeah.
I noticed the 18 trees are required, and you're providing 19. So you're providing the city in Newport Beach with an extra tree.
Well, my landscape architect turned to me, says, "That darn architect drew them in there."
There you go.
So the trees are actually in front of the buildings, but there's not a lot of opportunity on site. I mean, if we go on site where the hedges are, we actually have to rip hedges out. Those hedges have been there for, I'm guessing, 20-plus years. So, but we did, I just think that's accidental. I'd love to say it was purposeful, but I think it was-
Intentional benevolence.
I do think it was accidental. We do have trees that are surrounding the buildings. They're part of the whole new ambiance that we're trying to create.
And then Dolphin Stryker Way, not exactly a household name. If you were to be given the curb cut, can you change addresses in there, or how does that work for you?
I've already visited with the city. Marina Morelli will give me an address for both buildings on MacArthur.
Okay.
So there will be a new name, and there will be new addresses. She cannot issue, or the city cannot issue new addresses until it's approved.
Okay. So MacArthur would be more beneficial to your business there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
Mayor, council, my name is Todd Stoughton-Burrell, Laguna Beach, California. I'm going to do a very short presentation. This is part of a three-site complex that was originally envisioned, I think, this was originally built in the 60s?
No, 1975.
1975. And I used to have my office nearby, and I would go up and down the street. I'd never knew, could figure out how to get into these restaurants, because this is, it's like going around the mulberry bush. You go all the way through, if you go down the highway, and then you've got to go down this road here, and then if you're lucky, you make this turn, and then if you go down one of these streets, and you end up a cul-de-sac, and you go, "I'm going in the cul-de-sac", it can't be the entry to a project, right? And so I think over the years, this parcel has suffered by the way it was originally designed. Before there was freeways, MacArthur Boulevard was the main way to go to the beach. And that road was just gradually decommissioned as people figured out other ways to get around that were much more efficient. We've done this striping plan, which illustrates how wide the street is. What is your secret to the red? I can't seem to get, I know, but it doesn't seem to work.
Oh, I see.
I see. Well, then, I won't be able to point, because, oh, there we go. It's a three-lane road. The outside lane is actually two lanes wide, and so we provided a D-cell lane and an X-cell, a D-cell lane. Yeah, right here, and an X-cell lane. And also, there's a left-hand turn pocket provided within this huge median, striped median. This intersection is actually designed for two left-hand turns, which is not used. It's only one left turn.
Who pays for all that? You?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's just striping. There's no median curbs or anything like that that has been installed. We've worked with the traffic engineer to verify that distances are correct, so we're not diminishing the left-hand turn lanes, and we're within plenty of distance to make a left-hand turn into the project. This is the view of the project from MacArthur Boulevard. And we think that the architecture is compatible with the area, and it's also, I think one of the disappointments about going down MacArthur Boulevard now, that you can't see in windows, you know, the Bank of America is on the corner, and it's almost like a wall. It's all walled off, and there's no excitement. And this project, I think, provides the uses and the ability for people from all of the office buildings around it to walk to lunch, you know, which also diminishes really the demand for parking. There's 200, over 200 cars, and if you go out there today, you hardly see, you know, oil spots in the parking lot. There's plenty of parking, and the restaurants are primarily using their spaces in the evening. And this project would use the spaces mostly during the day. So there's a huge shared use possibility, so we feel there's plenty of parking for what we're proposing. I guess we did provide one extra tree, but it's part of the ambiance of the project. As you enter the center area, we wanted to have palm trees and the ability to-
Yeah, actually.
I don't know which tree it is. It's extra, but. There's an interesting grade change from MacArthur. It goes up about five feet, so we have an ADA access that goes into the project from both Dolphin Stryker Way and MacArthur. And by the way, this project will be built under the new California Code of Green Building, and so all of your concerns about water safety would all be addressed in that code. It'll have to be done under that new code, which we'll probably succeed.
I thought perhaps, but it wasn't spelled out very clearly. Thank you.
These are some of the more technical elevations of the project.
Excuse me, let me go back to that, to the issue about the grade. So when you make your right-hand turn or left-hand turn to go into the complex, you're going up five feet?
Well, it's about four feet. The driveway is a very gradual driveway. There is a, again, my red button is not working on your system here. How did you make it work? You made it work. Do you push it lightly, or do you, I don't know. There's a, there you go. Who's got that one? Oh, I should have brought my own. There's a view cone that is a red line, and it's also in your exhibit, so there is a view cone right at the driveway, so that you, your view of the entry and exit of the project's not inhibited by any landscaping or walls.
I guess the issue I would have is, is somebody going to slow down going in that, and is that going to cause a backup on MacArthur? Is there potential for that, or has that been engineered to avoid that?
Let's go back to the striping plan. Now that I have a pen, oh, boy, that's much better. We're providing a D-cell lane right here. So there's three lanes on MacArthur, one, two, three, plus a D-cell lane, which is allowed within the same distance as it exists. You can see that this is also a D-cell lane within the same geometry as you go around on the free right that goes around the corner. So people that are coming down the street have the ability to decelerate into the project, also accelerate with acceleration and join the traffic here. And then this has all been engineered by traffic consultants, and all fits the city's parameters. If there's any questions, I think everything has been covered, you know, by the beautiful staff report, and the staff has been very helpful in this project.
I was going to suggest you were endangering your goal of brevity, so-
Right. And thank you for the pen. I don't know who this likes there.
Okay.
If there's any questions, I'll be glad to-
Any questions? None. Thank you. All right. Todd, did you have anybody else that you wanted to invite up to the podium, or shall we?
No, I have more, but no.
Okay.
I would urge you to follow bullet point number two, approve the project.
Well, I think we should take comment from the public before we get to that. So does anyone from the public have a comment to make on this project?
Mayor, and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. I appreciate Councilman Hill's wish to revitalize this property, but I want to call your attention to something about the process underlying the appeal, other than the fee waivers, that strikes me as being not quite proper. In both this and the recent Mariners Point appeal, the applicant is proposing to build something that, as you saw, requires a long, long list of deviations, waivers, and exemptions from the city's established development standards. And in both cases, when the initial proposal was denied by the planning commission, the planning commission made it very clear that they were doing so, quote, "without prejudice", end quote, meaning that the applicant is actually being invited to return to them with a revised proposal correcting the concerns that led to the denial. However, in both cases, after creating what he says is a modified proposal correcting many of those, or all of those concerns, the applicant has chosen not to take it back to the commission for a thorough reevaluation, subject to the normal possibility of appeal, not only by himself, but other concerned parties. Instead, he has chosen to take it directly to you for a decision which, if he wins, is final and unchallengeable. And if he loses, the staff is recommending again that you deny the proposal, quote, "without prejudice", so there's no loss to him. In connection with the Mariners Point proposal, at least one member of the public raised this concern about short-circuiting the public's right to appeal and approval by not taking the revised proposal back to the planning commission. Although the public may not be as involved and engaged in this project, I think the same concern arises here. As to the substance of the appeal, several of the planning commissioners expressed, as you heard, concerns about creating an unsignalized intersection on MacArthur Boulevard, breaking the precedent for having no direct vehicular access to the traffic lanes, something that potentially interferes with the flow of traffic and creates the likelihood that people will use the new entry point as an unauthorized shortcut to the interior properties. The applicant contends that this is not a problem, because this segment of MacArthur, he says, no longer carries the traffic load it was originally designed for. I have no idea if that is correct or not, but I think it is clear, at least to me, that traffic loads will increase again sometime in the future, and people will be wondering what council or planning commission allowed this shopping center to interrupt the flow by dumping its traffic onto an otherwise free-flowing street. I urge you to select not option two, but Ms. Ung's option number three, which is to ask the applicant to correct that problem and his other corrections that he's made, and take his proposal back to the planning commission, where it can have a proper review. Thank you.
Do we have any other comment from the public? All right. Whoops, one more.
Dan Purcell, Corona Del Mar. May we dim the lights, and may I have that microphone, please? I have a brief video I'm going to show this evening. It's a bit of a Victrola. We have to crank it to get it going here.
That's what family members say killed their loved one outside an Orange County nightclub. It happened in the parking lot of the Code Restaurant and Lounge on the 4200 block of Stryker Way in Newport Beach. Eyewitness news reporter Shuba Ravindran is live in Tribuco Canyon, where the victim's family is hoping the killer will turn himself in. Shuba?
Well, John CJ Hubbard was known as a star athlete when he attended Santa Margarita Catholic High School here. He was a young and vibrant 27-year-old, which is why his family is in complete shock that he could be killed by a single punch.
I get the call at every parent's dress in the middle of the night.
Thanksgiving will never be the same for the Hubbard family. Late Wednesday night, 27-year-old CJ Hubbard was leaving Code Restaurant and Lounge in Newport Beach with a friend. It was the last time his loved ones would see him alive.
If he saw something that he didn't feel was great, he's the type of guy that would say, "Hey, this isn't good." And he might have paid for that.
Family members say CJ had possibly witnessed a man in an altercation with a woman in the parking lot. CJ stepped in and was punched once in the face. The impact caused an artery to burst in his brain. He was rushed to a hospital, where he was declared brain dead.
While he was on life support, it was clear that he was, that one punch, had killed him.
Police say the man who hit him took off running. It is now at large.
We have no information this time, what the identity of the perpetrator is, and that's essentially why we're asking for the public's help in this matter.
I think he should come forward. He needs to face the fact that he killed somebody. He killed my son.
CJ's sister says her brother was Mr. Popularity, a UCLA graduate who worked in commercial real estate. His family never knew this would be his last Thanksgiving.
He was my best friend. Trying to think how I'm going to make it through without him.
Now, if you have any information about this suspect, you're asked to contact Newport Beach Police at this number on your screen. It's 1-800-550-NBPD. That's 1-800-550-6273. Now, over 100 of CJ's friends were at the hospital when he was taken off life support on Friday. His family expects over 500 people to attend his funeral next week. Reporting live in Tribuco Canyon, Shuba Ravindran, ABC7, IBC.
We have the very slow computer here. We're going to get through this. This is, this is- This is, this is CJ with his, this is CJ Hubbard with his nephew, Jay Johnson. His nephew won't, won't get to enjoy him for many years. This is a tragedy that didn't need to happen, and this was about a property manager who didn't do their job, a property owner. Todd Ridgeway is an excellent person. He's been a good person in the community for many, many years, but he's an absolutely lousy property owner and absolutely lousy landlord. Code nightclub was a real problem for our code enforcement department. They were there over and over and over again, and the property owner could have stepped up and say, hey, you know, get this under control. I'm your, I'm your landlord. Stop what you're doing. Prior to that, it was Fury nightclub. We had all kinds of problems with Fury nightclub. And, you know, they, he, he had stepped in and tried to get this situation under control. It's not fair for our city to be burdened with property owners like this. So hopefully, going forward, Todd Ridgeway will, will do his part in this city to make sure that his properties aren't a problem, tragedies like this are avoided. This could have easily been avoided by clamping down on that group. You know, Code nightclub closed shortly after the death, but not before when Mohammed Ghazi filed a report of $40,000 being stolen out of the safe. Finally, it closed down. And I, again, I just hope Ridgeway does a better job going forward. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Dan. Do we have any other public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. Todd, did you want to make any closing comments? Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry, Todd. We'll have one more public comment.
This is Ray Curry is the owner of Classic Q.
Good evening. Ray Curry, like you said, owner of Classic Q. I was very sad to see that. I remember when it happened, and I don't think Todd had anything to do with that. If he would have known, that would have never happened. I, I highly support the project and I highly support the access. I think it would be good for the whole community. Thank you very much. I also want to talk to Marina about MacArthur address also. I would, thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any other public comment here? Seeing none. Todd, would you care to make any closing statements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the CJ Hubbard incident was a tragedy. I certainly take no responsibility for that, and my condolences went out to the family. The, I, contractually, I had no control over the building when I bought it. It was trophies. Trophies assigned it to Hamburger Mary's in that assignment. Hamburger Mary's assigned it to Fury. I had no control over those transfers, and then they sold and transferred and assigned it to Code. I met with the police and I met with the city attorney numerous times. They had copies at the lease, and I just want to say that was an unfortunate attack on me personally. I take exception to it. I was bound by a contract and I had to honor that contract. Regarding, going back to planning commission, I mentioned early on, planning commission was concerned about disruption of traffic in a, in a level of service A on MacArthur Boulevard. It was obvious to me that it was not going to be heard in a rational manner by planning commission. I chose to bring it here. The comment, and I'm gonna make one last comment because Mike Riker from the newspaper called me and said that this matter was being called up. As you know, I was on this board for eight years. I was on planning commission for six. What I didn't know when I called up matters which I thought were reasonable and fair was the amount of money expended by applicants to get here. On the property at Mariners Point, which is not before you, the applicant had spent about a quarter of a million dollars to get to where it was. I think it was reasonable and fair to have that matter brought up. I have spent over $160,000 in just the planning process. I think it's reasonable and fair to have it brought up. Yes, I made a phone call, and I would do it again, and I thought it was unfair for the newspaper to attack that process. It is a good process, and there are good people out there who deserve the right to have their projects brought up. So I want to make sure you understand that when I was here and when you're here, you've called up, I think, very good projects, and I think it's a reasonable call up. Thank you.
Todd, I have a question. One of the, the concerns was that you have a, only a one-year term for your off-site parking, and there's a condition that if you, for some reason, couldn't get that renewed, that you report it, and if you can't get parking within a certain time, then you have to reduce the uses. Well, isn't that just sort of balderdash? I mean, do you have a, you have contracts. I mean, people have, have leases, so if you can't get a lease, I mean, a parking space off-site, nothing happens, really. I mean, aren't we, isn't that the case? You can't just go kick those people out because suddenly you don't have parking, because you've got a, maybe a three-year lease with them or a five-year lease or something. So I don't understand how that works.
But that's, but that's not before you tonight. I have an off-site agreement that is a recorded document that is in perpetuity.
Why did the report from the, on the planning say one year?
That, that went away when it...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It's gone. I didn't disagree entirely, and I tried and tried, by the way, to negotiate a long-term lease. I can tell you Glidewell has a lease with them on an annual basis. It's been going on for 15 years. But anyhow, I, I, I didn't disagree with the planning commission. You saw a major overhaul of the project based upon the comments. The same with Mariners Point. You saw a major overhaul. I don't, you know, I listened to them on both instances, and I brought it to here, to this board. Thank you.
Back to council then. No more public comment. Do we have any other discussion?
I'd make a motion to approve the project. I think it's fairly clear that, that the access will revitalize this area, so I very much support it. And one of the reasons, by way of explanation, that I haven't participated in the call-ups is that when there is a major overhaul, it does take our staff time to do that, and there's costs incurred. And so I, I didn't want to shift those costs to taxpayers instead of have the applicant pay those. But I do support the, the plan before us, and I appreciate all the applicants doing to revitalize our community. And I would make the motion.
Just a clarification to make sure. Raj, you want to correct that? Is it one, item two in the conditions of approval?
Yes, it's, it's condition number two will be eliminated.
If that's acceptable to Councilmember DeGel in that motion.
I just had a question. We're waiving a development agreement, and we had, a year or two ago, had a, remember the office building we had up in your area by the airport where we're, they also requested a development agreement be waived? And we said, okay, we will waive it, but you gotta give us something for that. And we got some extra, what was it, landscaping or lighting or something?
You just found the source of the extra tree.
Well, can I have two trees, maybe? I just wonder if, if we did that, if there was any thoughts about that from other council members as to what we, or whether we just aren't comfortable with waiving?
Well, maybe ask Todd if he'll throw in another couple trees. He might.
I'm gonna make a comment. I thought requesting a development agreement for projects of this size, which is de minimis, I'm only adding 4,000 square feet, is an improper use of development agreement language. So I weighed in on that with some of you when that thing was passed. With Conexent and the larger projects, it's absolutely a, a good ordinance, but I think when it got passed, it, it, it lost its goal with de minimis, de minimis projects. I'm giving back a lot, by the way. I mean, I am redoing the entire site for two other people. I'm adding much more landscaping than currently, than currently exists. Your water management, Todd answered it correctly. We're gonna be doing actually some leads, components to the overall development. Candidly, I, I think it's there. I, I'm sorry, but I think it's there. I, I understand that development agreement was used to negotiate with larger projects. This is just a de minimis project. So I've given back. I will be cutting back the hedges because the overhang for cars, the, the spaces are 17 feet. So we're gonna go back in there and we're gonna, because the landscape area is six feet, so we're gonna cut back that hedge by one feet on each side, so now we're gonna have 18 feet, because cars actually don't pull in there adequately. I, I mean, I'm giving back, Nancy.
I'll shoot myself in the foot, but, you know, I just have to make a statement. I mean, I am absolutely opposed to the process of extracting money from people to do projects that we want them to do.
I just said, we did it before.
And I think this project has done a lot already, and, and I would be vehemently opposed to going back to them or to anyone and saying, we're gonna extract more now because we have the right to, to vote yes or no.
Do we have any other fir, any other comment? All right. Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I have to read the resolution and ordinance titles. Resolution number 2011-1, 101 for approval. Resolution of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, adopting a mitigated negative declaration number MN 2011-001, approving transfer of development rights number TD 2010-002, conditional use permit number 2011-026, modification permit number 2011-014, and waiver development agreement and finding traffic study number TS 2011-002, in compliance with a traffic phasing ordinance for a new commercial development located at 4221 Dolphin Stryker Way, and ordinance number 2011-25 for introduction. An ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, approving planned community development, Plan Amendment Number PD 2010-007, to change the zoning designation from restaurant site one to general commercial site eight for property located at 4221 Dolphin Stryker. With that, the motion carries unanimously.
Very good. Onto item number 13, which is the annual review of development agreement number 14. This might be a brief one as well, Mr. Mayor and council. I'll leave that up to you. This is another item where you'd conduct a public hearing in, I, I had, we have a staff report we could give, but it's fairly clear in the, the report itself, the written report, as to what we're talking about here. Does anyone care to hear a staff report on this? No one cares to hear that.
I would move the...
No offense intended. So...
I would move we find the applicant has demonstrated good faith compliance and received and filed a annual report.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We do need to open a public hearing, and I'd be happy to allow the reviewee here to make any statements. Dan, did you wish to say anything? Okay. Are there any other comments from the public on this agenda item?
Mayor Henen, members of the council, again, my name is Jim Mosher. If I understand the staff report correctly, we're in the 10th year of a 15-year agreement with the Irvine Company regarding their development of the Newport Coast, and despite the decade of development, this is apparently the very first year that the council has been reminded of its obligation to conduct a public review of compliance each August. I'll confine myself to just one question about the staff's assertion in the staff report that the region is essentially built out. I hope that is the case, and it seems to be supported by a number of the tables that are in the report, but the summary table that is on handwritten page 258 seems to paint a different picture, in particular regarding the visitor-serving accommodations. It states here that the currently issued and units under construction are 1,104, and it says the estimated units are 2,150, suggesting we're only about halfway towards building all the hotels and resorts that will be on the property. And more disturbingly, there's a column here called maximum units that, both for residences and for visiting serving, and although the spreadsheet seems to show the same totals under those columns, if you look at the individual numbers, they're all much bigger than the estimated or the built numbers. And in fact, I tried to add them up myself, and the totals seem to say that the Irvine Company is allowed to build something like 3,000 visitor-serving units compared to the 1,000 we have today, and something like 6,000 homes compared to the roughly 2,000 that are currently built or under construction. So that reg, naturally raises the question of whether in the last decade, these maximums are no longer maximums, somehow they're obsolete, or when we say that the thing is built out, do we just mean this is the first phase of development and there might possibly be a second, much larger phase coming up sometime in the future? If the maxima are misstated, I hope that will be corrected in next year's review. Otherwise, I hope you'll seek some clarification of that. Thank you.
All right. Does staff wish to make any comment in response to that?
Mr. Mosher is, is commenting about what the entitlement was, at least initially, envisioned at the time of the development agreement. Later amendments to the local coastal program for the Newport Coast ratcheted those back completely, and you can see if you tour around the visitor-serving areas, they're completely built out. So those are maximum numbers envisioned at the time, but they're certainly no longer compatible with the LCP or with the amount of land that's out there today.
All right. So there's nothing defective about the report of the situation?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other public comment on this item? All right. Seeing none. Back to council. Any further comment? Councilmember Curry? No? All right. Please vote.
With Councilmember Rosansky absent, the motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Item number 14, city council redistricting. Dave, can you introduce this item to us?
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmen, is this be the third time you've considered this? This is potentially, though, tonight, the formal first reading of the ordinance that would adopt it, and again, the encouragement to consider this a public hearing in light of what we're required to do and what the elections code requires to do regarding proposed changes in the council manic districts. We do want to let you know, Councilmember DeGel notified me about a potential different map, and we do have that for your review, and I'll defer to Councilmember DeGel for further comment about that.
It had to do with trying to maintain the commercial area, the zero-population area within District Four, and certainly appreciate all the work that the committee has done and, you know, in the spirit of collaboration and accommodation, is there a way, is there a path to include that area somehow in District Four? So I did reach out to the chair of the committee, Councilman Rosansky, and also the mayor, and there isn't a definitive proposal that I came up with after a couple meetings with staff. There was a, a previous proposal, I believe it's, I would identify that as option number five, which would provide for that commercial area to be back in, and it would also meet two goals of the, of the redistricting. The first goal of four being the, the standard deviation, meaning that the, the numbers between districts were not far apart. And so I think five was a better, more met the standard than what was ultimately recommended. And then the second reason was in the spirit of retaining districts as much as possible, that also achieved that goal more. So maybe you have some ideas about how, how you would do that.
Is there a sample in here?
We can put it on the screen. Deanna and Patrick are here.
And I know there had been some concern while we're, that we had had a first hearing already, but nothing's really cooked at this point in terms of our timeline. You know, we would still be able to make amendments, so, and I would welcome any of your thoughts and suggestions. That would not be accurate. I mean, that's, that's something that we had considered, but clearly the, okay, why don't you go ahead, Dan? Why don't you? Yeah, why don't you go through your presentation intact and we'll go from there.
Well, this was option five that was during the, Dan Cepanolo, Community Development Department. This was option five that was discussed at the redistricting committee level and this is, I think, I got it. So with this particular option, did keep the Santa Ana Heights and the airport area within District Four. Also did, yeah, is that, this was the option?
If you want to show the one labeled recommendation, I don't think I was proposing it in such a strong way. I think it was more of an idea.
Yeah, because this one splits the District Three across the bay.
Right. Do I get a vote with that or anything?
Well, we're all here to discuss it. A vote?
So Dan, if you want to do the one labeled recommendation, go ahead, that would be fine too.
I'm sorry, the proposed recommendation?
Yeah, so what do the numbers look like on that one?
This is the one, that's the one that we're-
That's the one that was originally proposed.
This is what's attached to the ordinance this evening.
Right.
And then go back to the one labeled recommendation. Right, you just had it.
Basically, this would just push or move the Baypoint Apartments and Fletcher Jones into, from District Three to District Four.
And how does that change the population numbers?
By about 504 people into District Four, which was already at 13,000, 009.
Is there any way you could put Harbor Cove into Five? What would that do to the numbers?
So Harbor Cove back into District Five, which it exists today. That will even out the numbers a little bit because then it'll take the 500 out of Harbor Cove, out of Four, back into Five. So it's probably around, maybe about a 4% deviation. The proposal was about a 3%.
Okay, right. But your, this proposal with Five though, doesn't include the Port Streets, which I think is-
Oh, you know, I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize. This is the variant. I apologize about that. Yeah, no, the Port Streets and then Harbor Cove back into Five. So the only thing that Harbor, that District Five would be excluded from District Five would be the Park Newport Apartments.
So in effect, District Five picks up more through Harbor Cove and then District Four picks up more through Baypoint Apartments?
Correct.
Okay.
With the division of Santa Ana Heights at the 73.
Okay. And then Santa Ana Heights would go into District Three?
Correct.
So could you read those numbers? I can't see them from District-
The population numbers.
Population, so District, actually District Four would be 13,013 and then District Five would be 12,831. And then the problem is that 500, District Three is going to lose the 504 from the Bay- Baypoint Apartments. Here.
District Three then be?
District Three would be 11,580.
Or sort of means and standard deviations and all that, how does that compute?
This one was about, I think this was about in the middle, this was about close to 5%, 4%.
And is that within an acceptable range?
Right.
I've got an email that says it's 4.3.
4.3.
The original proposal was 3.3 and option five, which the committee considered previous to its final recommendation, was 5%.
Right. That's correct. Yeah, the 3.3 was the original, Councilmember Daigle's recommendation, 5% right, 4.3, correct.
Well, I'd be initially curious what the Chair of the Committee thinks about that, what your view is. I know you spend a lot of time on this.
I'd be interested to hear what the council members think. I mean, it's, you know, it's pushing numbers around. I mean, we make rushes district even smaller, which is not a desirable thing, but does make District Five, takes them down a little bit, I think. I mean, sorry. It actually, I mean, it makes it a little more lopsided, but.
I, you know, if we really want to pursue this, then I think we have to start almost over because we don't have any public here tonight to comment on this and they were quite involved in the original thing. And if we want to do that, I certainly don't want to try to create it tonight and say this is what it is without a lot of public comment, which we had in the beginning.
Councilmember Curry?
Well, with all due respect to Councilmember Daigle, who I, and I appreciate her desire to want to keep, you know, a major auto dealer in her district and whatever other parcels you'd like to keep in your district. I mean, all of the sort of lost areas that we thought are, that we've enjoyed representing, I certainly have enjoyed representing the Port Streets. But I think we did have a process, and I think Councilman Rosansky did an outstanding job chairing that committee and taking the three opportunities that we had to get public input and in developing a balanced map. The problem, I think, with this map, just off that I could see initially, is that it separates Santa Ana Heights from the airport. It extends the airport where we'll have significant population growth, which I think further exacerbates the population disparity going forward. And I guess I'm hard pressed to think of why it would be an improvement over what the committee arrived at after hearings and after public input. And now we're at our, I think, third opportunity as a full council to see it with another hearing going forward. So I agree with Councilmember Gardner that we're probably going to have to start over if we do that.
Well, and if I may, you know, I think there's something to be said for keeping the airport corridor together, which would include the homes under the flight path as well as the businesses. I think that there's something to be said for that, that they have a commonality of interest that way. Clearly, there are different types of property, but that would be their biggest issue, so.
Well, when you look at the four goals, you know, one of those goals was retaining original districts. And so if you look at that proposal, you know, Harbor Cove has traditionally been in District Five and then that commercial area has been in Four. So I looked at it, I weighed it against the four goals.
Yeah, well, I, and I can't disagree with what you're saying. Yeah, I mean, a lot of the districts have changed, but I don't disagree with what you're saying, Leslie. I just, I mean, there's something to be said for keeping the neighborhoods together and that was part of it too, keeping the areas that had commonality of interest. Now, a lot of that tended to be, you know, homeowners association or the Port Streets or Coronel Mar, the old area, you know, the peninsula, Bebo Island with the area that it was at, you know, that more tends to naturally go with the areas to the north than the peninsula where we had it in some of the proposals. So, you know, that area up there, the airport area and the residences there, they're kind of a, for better or for worse, they're bound together by the airport, which is their biggest issue, so.
Yeah, in all due respect though, I've always seen Bristol as a marker, a line of demarcation where, you know, north of Bristol is commercial, south is residential.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, I appreciate the job that you did because in the meetings that I had, it takes a lot of thought to move the numbers around. I'm just looking for a way that somehow that commercial area can remain in District Four.
Okay. Is there any other comment on this item from the DIAS here? Okay. Well, let's open this up to public comment. It's all in your head, Jim.
Yeah, my name is Jim Mosher. Kind of recall that at the public hearings, there was some wish to keep the Santa Ana Heights and Airport area together, partly with the view that there would be residences of a different character, but they wanted to think of themselves as a community up And I did, I did attend all of those meetings and your two previous hearings, so I apologize for the matters I'm going to bring up, not having brought them up before, but I honestly, they didn't occur to me until I saw this in the form of a ordinance that was being proposed for, for action. And frankly, the ordinances never seemed terribly important to me because to the best of my knowledge, we conduct all our elections on a citywide basis. So this really means the boundaries affect primarily just a very, very small part of our population that is either considering running for council or wanting to sign a petition in favor of a nominee for council or wanting to serve on one of the few committees where residence in a particular district is required. But when I looked at this, it occurred to me, for the sake of that small group, we do need to try to achieve clarity. And unlike previous districting ordinances, this just seems to be supported by a rather low-resolution map. And if you lived right on one of these edges, you might wonder what the coloring is meant to represent. The original charter in 1954 and all the other ordinances that I could find since then have had, in addition to the map, they had what they called a legal description of the districts. And this coloring that we have up there and here, the legal description described the streets that were the boundaries of the districts. And that seems to be absent from this ordinance, which I had not seen before the staff report was prepared. And I'm not sure even that exactly we're using streets here because the map that you just looked at and we've been putting together was kind of assembled from a jigsaw puzzle of little pieces with population numbers on them that seem to be statistical subdivisions or something understood by the planning division. And I would think you might want to consider whether the ordinance should refer to those because in the future, it might not be clear quite what we're trying to color, why the boundaries have the strange contours they do. So the ordinance might want to reference what those statistical units were and enumerate which ones go in which district in addition to the map. And then the second thing, which is probably really trivial, is the harbor area of our city is not colored at all as to what district it belongs in. And I tried to inquire the staff and discovered there's an extremely small but non-zero population of people who live on the water. And in all those hearings, we didn't think, what district are those people in? Those live aboard people? And presumably, they have the same right as anybody else to run for city council or to sign a nomination petition or to be on a committee. And does the ordinance need to address what district they belong in? Thank you.
I guess we could consider them expats. Would that be?
They'd actually fall under, under charter section 1,006, they'd fall under District One because that's the, that's the longest common boundary, so they automatically get incorporated to District One. So congratulations.
I was, I was short some population here, so I'm glad to hear that.
You know what though-
I think we have about 34 people, yeah.
He brings up a good point, though. It would seem as if there would be a description in this ordinance that would state, you know, District Five as bounded by Bebo Island, you know, Bayside Drive, MacArthur and so on. I mean, why would you not indicate your boundaries in a text and integrate them into an ordinance?
Councilmember Daigle, we can include that information as part of the second reading as an attachment to the ordinance. It would just, it would basically be just a descriptive text of what you see in the exhibit. So it's not a substantial change to anything that the council's considering tonight.
Well, I would think it'd be fairly substantial if you're going from no descriptions at all to a complete description. I mean, you're basically, it's a vacuum at this point.
I mean, if you look at what came with all those, what do you call them, electoral?
Their census tracts.
Yeah, the census tracts. I mean, that was pretty specific when we made our maps, is you could trace through the census maps exactly where the boundaries were.
Right. But I mean, you know, we're talking about, this is a very serious sort of an effort to redistrict and it would seem as if it needed to be done in a, in a way that complies with, with both ordinance, both first and second reading would need to comply with a complete description.
Well, I certainly support the fact that we should have a careful description of what these boundaries are. And I think it sounds like that's something that's readily doable in the second reading. Is that, and that's not, that would not constitute a substantive change that would require-
I believe that'd be fine, to go and add that and move it on to second reading. You could bring it back for introduction again, that's council's pleasure, but I don't see it as a requirement.
Okay.
At least for the purpose of discussion, I will move the action.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I will read the title for ordinance number 2011-26 for introduction in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach changing and redefining the boundaries of council districts. With Councilmember Daigle voting no, the motion carries.
Okay. We are on to motions for reconsideration. Do we have any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Then we will adjourn the meeting this evening in the honor of two individuals, the first of which is Randall Decker. We were sorry to learn that Randall Decker, a contract building inspector for the city, passed away on October the 15th. He was 47 years old. Randall worked for 20 years as a building and safety inspector and was currently employed by Van Dorp Chow Associates, a firm under contract with Newport Beach. He had been working under contract with us since August. In addition to his career as a building inspector, Randy served our country as a petty officer first class in the United States Navy Reserve and was on active duty status at the time of his passing. Randy is survived by his wife of 23 years, Kathy, his daughters Caitlin, Rachel and Elizabeth, his parents Marlene and Raymond, and sister Robin Decker. Services have been held and Randy was buried in, with military honors, in Riverside National Cemetery. Nancy, did you have another memorial?
Yes. Yes, in honor of Don Swanson. I met Don in elementary school. He's got quite a history. His father was the first walking postal carrier and his mother ran Dorothy Jo Dance Studio. And so when we all got to junior high, Don was very popular because he knew all the dances and all the girls wanted to dance with him. He became a member of the Costa Mesa Fire Department where he served for 35 years and he survived by his sons Jed and Jake and his sister Sandy. I didn't know Don really well in later years, but I do know that he was a very good friend. Anytime some, one of his friends had something to do with the city, whether it was a potential lease for a property or anything, Don was there with a letter or appearing at the council meeting. And I know his friends will thoroughly miss him, as I will. I have fond memories, as I say, I'm doing the swing with him.
Okay. All right. With that, we're adjourned.